Good evening, welcome to the Cortez City Council Special Meeting Workshop. Today is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting and in-person virtual contact by Zoom. I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Colby Early, recyclable material coordinator. Given update on the material management website. Good evening, Colby.
Good evening. So what I'm gonna bring into your today is a new web tool.
Would you speak into your microphone so we could hear you better, sir?
There you go, is that better?
That's my shirt, thank you.
Alright, good. Okay, so what I'm bringing up today is a new web tool that we just put on the City Cortez website. This is in conjunction with San Juan Mason Recycling Association. It's a group effort to try to bring together Region 9 and make the material management easier. It's multi-jurisdictional tool. I'll show you right now. So if you just go over to the City Cortez website and see a trash recycling tab, go ahead and click that. That's gonna bring you over to the new web tool. Wasting recycling, then you're gonna go ahead and you're gonna put in your address. It's going to then take you to different databases, so we're primarily working with Monzauma County, and that's why you need to enter your address. So it's gonna tell you what county you're in, and then it's gonna give you the information based off that. New. Let's just pick up around, oh, not our tool. Is that us here? Alright, now from here, you can just enter in any material that you're looking to try to get rid of. And it'll tell you exactly if it's a recycle item, where to take it, if it's available for a drop-off, drop-off located, and if it's something special like, say, Christmas trees. So Christmas trees here, let's scroll down. So Cortez Residence Own-Plane, Christmas Tree Collection, give you the approximate dates that we're collecting our trees, gives you the three drop-off locations for the trees. So, of course, City of Cortez, when we take it, the hours of operation, and Monzauma County. Whenever you click on one of those, then you can actually go to Google Maps and hit directions. So people can actually use those as well to do that. Right now, it's in soft opening mode. So we're, uh, we're going through and making edits as things are brought to our attention. I already went through, you know, 250 or so items. I got those, those preloaded, so everything's pretty well organized in here. But there's always room for finding. So if you're looking for something, none of them is. I'll tell you. We'll type it in. It'll tell you, City of Cortez, so put it in your green bins or separated, her size, it's all picked up. Scroll down. Cortez public drop-off, of course, they can get information from there. And it will also tell you a list of alternatives in the county, so like I said, this is a multi-jurisdictional tool. So that means all Region 9 kind of work together to bring this to fruition. So you make this public drop-off, your size is a little bit drop-off, more is public land drop-off, so it gets me.
Oh, okay, I have a few questions. First one is, what would you call like camping fuel canister, you know, that you plug into your propane? What did you say?
Propane canisters.
Propane, okay, and then as far as the usability of this, would you be able to put, say, like someone's schedule? You know, because at my house, the trash comes on Tuesdays, but I've noticed recycling comes, came Monday.
Right.
So I don't know if you could do that based on region, have like the date, the schedule?
This is right here, so the reason we run this tool is to spread out the costs. This tool right here runs about $3,000 a day.
Okay.
I worked with San Juan Mason Recycling Association along the board there, and we spread the cost over region, but San Juan Mason Recycling Association is actually fronting the cost. And then we're trying to recruit maybe with some sort of a membership fee, that way no one entity would actually end up paying the full run of that cost, and you can do that by demographics, you can do that by population. But to answer your question, yes, we could do that. There are extra portions that you'd have to buy for the tool, and if we were to do something like that, then it would be better if we owned the tools rapidly, and that way we'd control all of it. But there are, there are additional things to do, this calendar management, schedule your day, schedule a reminder, that's all that we'll put in this.
Okay, well, this is cool, I'm gonna use this a lot, because I always have questions on what can go in recycling.
Right, and that was the biggest, biggest part of it. We had during COVID last year, when it was first shut down, anywhere from 70, 80% of all calls that were coming in were based on trash or recycling questions. This wasn't really on the forefront, but we were looking at it with San Juan Mason Recycling Association. And even today, you know, there's six different people that enter phones at any given time. And you can see, you know, probably one to two questions a day per person, you know, is probably the average. So this is, this is a self-education tool, and a way to, you know, we're gonna push it out there, we're gonna probably start putting it on our flyers, and let people know that it is there, so they can answer those questions themselves, so they can get the materials to the to the appropriate place. But right now, like, soft opening, I really wanna dial in and find all the flaws that, you know, be an eyes on the whole time. Any other questions?
Colby, I have one question, this is where leaving, is there any place where you can take leftover paint, paints, spies like that?
Paints, uh, so, yes, there is. Now, if you're looking for paint, just put in paint here. Full or partially full, empty, or so if it's empty, it's gonna tell you, of course, our public drop-offs, it's gonna dictate that you need to have that material clean. Full or partially full, it's gonna give you state guidelines, basically, is what we go by. So we have a link, this link will take you in here. People can just go ahead and follow that link through this, this tool. Paint Care will tell you who around us is actually certified, because that changes hands all the time. You don't know who's taking, who's taking the paint one day, or who's not taking the other day. So if people want to go ahead and get rid of through Paint Care facility, they can click the link. But if you look down here, City Cortez Trash Collection, put this in your gray garbage can, park, likely once a week, do not roll the cards so special. Instructions, latex paint can be wasted with trash with litter moon if you dry it out. So you have to put in something like wood or dirt, and as soon as you do that, then it's inert as far as CDPH guidelines go. You can put it in your trash, and I would love if they would like to recycle that information.
Thank you.
Very well.
This is a great website, and it's really full of information, it's really useful, thank you.
Yeah, we tried to link everything within the city website on one page as far as where information can go, so as soon as you get trash recycling, you can see the sublinks on the left-hand side of your screen over here. So these are all links within links, basically. It'll take you to the other links within the city website, and those are the ones that are completely under our control. I do have editing capabilities on the tool, but it's, it's a shared tool, so I'm gonna have to make sure that it's working the best possible for not only City Cortez, but Four Corners Recycling Initiative, who is also a work with San Juan Mason Recycling. Any other questions?
Ricky, Colby, appreciate you.
Oh, I just, sorry, because you're looking for bugs. So I clicked the list of materials underneath and then chose Cortez, but the list isn't showing up for some reason. Because it says, or select a material from the following list.
Oh, list of materials at the bottom?
Yeah, I just don't see a list.
So whenever I click the list of materials, it's bringing me to Wasted Recycling. Region 9, that's gonna be Archlotta County, La Plata County, and Monzauma County. These are also little subparts of people that are in San Juan Mason Recycling Association, so this is just who you're trying to find. Monzauma County and City of Cortez are gonna be basically the same. So if you hit City of Cortez, then you go ahead and, yeah, I see.
It works for Monzauma County, though. It has like the A through Z, or A through one.
Yeah, I was there, and it was, uh. Uh, that is something that I can actually talk and reflect about. It's kind of difficult to share material lists and differences between, you know, Durango does things entirely differently than City of Cortez doesn't. There's differences, and there's reasons for those differences. But it's, it's just to make sure that we don't step on each other's toes, I don't wanna be editing their information, and they don't wanna be editing mine. But that is something I wanted to.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Worley, do you have any questions?
Uh, I was just saying that the question I had was the paint. You see a lot of paint beside trash, dumpsters, or whatever, I just wondered. Now that he answered that question. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the update on paths to Mesa Verde Trail. James Dietrich, Natural Resources Planning and Public Lands Coordinator. Good evening, James.
Ma'am, I'm worried, he just said that he was coming to the meeting in person, I just received an email from him, and Chris is going back to find out why he's not here, we misunderstood how he was gonna speak with you. So, uh, Chris is going back, has gone back.
Okay.
So you may wanna move on to the city, and hopefully we can get him on. He's coming in person already, he's on to the.
Okay, then, uh, we'll skip, we'll come back to this later if he's able to get in person or online. The third item on the agenda is a local vendor preference discussion. Resolution number one, series 2009. Director of General Services Rick Smith and Director of Finance Kelly Kosky. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. What I included in the back here, we had the current policy that was adopted in 2009. And I also included a previous vendor preference policy that was in place from 1986 to 2009, and it was changed. Vendor preference, as you'll note, and later on in the meeting, I applied it to a couple of bid items, so you can see how that process works, we do that as a assignment. There's two sides to this story, and that constitutes government purchasing basically taking multiple steps. They understand that it's more of a political issue than it is a term of issue. So there's two sides to the coin. One is supporting local businesses, which I'm in favor of, and the other side of that coin is is considered just like a tax. So you're taxing the citizens that aren't in business to pay more to, to sort of, that's one concept. But there again, you take a look, for example, car dealers, they collect a lot of sales tax from the city. So I can see both sides of it, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. I understand that you may wanna revisit this and maybe change some of the thresholds. I just wanted to provide that information to you.
Thank you, Rick, any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a question, it's, it's a little bit, it's kind of somewhat unrelated, but can you just let people know what you do in addition to the preference that we do have, but what you do reach out to to local businesses to try and get them to bid as well on, on bids?
Well, for example, when the, you know, bid to bid, I have hand-delivered bid solicitation to all three local car dealers. It kind of depends on what the commodity is. As a general rule, the City of Cortez uses the Colorado Bidnet System. And that's a database that input through the wind, registered by commodity, they didn't wanna sell. And, uh, but by the way, it opens it up to everybody that's on Bidnet, so you could have a vendor in Cortez that could be digging on something that's people's dream for that, so first of all, please. Because a lot of times, we'll, if we know somebody that has a item in town, we'll mail them a special one so they don't have to go to Bidnet. But as a general rule, artificial normal process is, is put it out on the Bidnet on the database.
Do, and do you know offhand about how, how much purchasing the city is doing every year through, through the process like that?
No, no, I think, uh, it, it varies from year to year in, um, you know, commodity things, for example, the equipment funds for vehicles. We spend roughly about 350,000 total in equipment finance here. This year, for example, we had a KIAR truck, and the rest were just regular vehicles, so, and it varies. We also, as a city, have changed over the years, we used to have what we call a local purchase order. And when we got the purchasing cards, we encouraged people to top local and use the purchase cards, and that's for small purchases, uh, say, three hundred and below, as a general rule. So, for example, parts of Ratt thinking and bidding for renovation thing, they just go down there and buy it. It's kind of an efficiency thing, we've done that, and spending it balanced on a purchasing card is set by city policy, but also by each department head. So for example, parts of Ratt and probably Corx, it would, it would speak out to what each entity will have as a limit on their card. And it's also coming in very good on the traffic and painting, so then they can hop to the motel or whatnot, and turn in their receipts, and then the limit goes back there.
Rick, I have a question for you. So I tried, I tried to research other cities that are comparable size for their local vendor preferences. It was not a very successful search. But what do you know of other communities of similar size and their local vendor preferences? Is this comparable to what they have, or is this standard?
I would say it's probably about 50/50 at the even count. I have a copy of the Durango one here that was sent to me today. Of course, they're a little bit larger than they are. And they also look at it as, on a regional basis, so they have a two-tiered vendor preference. Theirs is a 5% preference for all bidders, for $100,000, whichever is less, but they have a 3% for a bidder that's in Region 9. And that has a maximum of $40,000. And by the way, our current city policy states that you have to have a, basically, a business. The current one is county wide, so a vendor that is, that is outside of the city, we treat them the same as we do a vendor in the city limits. The, the old vendor preference, the one that was started in 1986, you had to have this established in the city limits, so we opened that up to county wide, mainly because the contractors are all at work, rather than necessarily the county versus in the city. So that change was made in 2009.
Uh, Rick, I did get an email from a local citizen, and I forwarded it to you and Kelly about the, the Durango vendor preference situation, your contractors. Just to show my people know that, you know, we're listening to their input, we're sharing it with the people in charge.
So that's, that's the one I was just stating about the regional, that was a Durango, yes.
Uh, I like the way that theirs is with the, the region, including Region 9, but I think I would also include maybe San Juan, uh, New Mexico. Do we get bids from Farmington often?
We do, but there's a state statute that has been involved several times. And that's Colorado statute, that there's a reciprocal law on vendor preference. So where it came up was the first time I was aware was at the airport. And, uh, New Mexico, I may be off on this, because I believe they had a 10% New Mexico bidding preference. So if you were going to invoke Colorado statute, then we, we on this side of the state line would vote 10% against a vendor in New Mexico. And, uh, I would take Rachel, that if it came down to this day, until you bid for a, a while, I would just pick that one. If we had a Farmington dealer come in, we could invoke that reciprocal law, uh, preference. But also, I think we'd get pushback locally if we didn't, so we treated New Mexico better than Colorado. But there again, this is a political thing, it's not really a purchasing thing. It's a, it's a nice simple side of it.
Okay, well, I would, I would like to see ours at least structured similar with the local, the regional, Region 9, and then non-residential. We don't maybe have to use as high numbers as them, because they, you know, they are a bigger city, but ours just seems like it needs an update, at the very least.
Uh, councilman, when I, when I asked to bring it on to the board, one of the reasons I wanted is just because our cap is so low. It's being at $25, $2,500 for bid versus, uh, Durango's is $100,000 for, for bid. I don't know that we should go that high, but I, I think that's something special, since it's more than 10 years old, and something that we should probably address. Uh, I would worry a little about giving preference outside of Monzauma County, just because the one of the reasons that I would wanna do is because you're basically advantaging businesses that are supporting local nonprofits and school clubs and that kind of thing, and they're paying taxes here. But like, a, a business in Durango is not paying taxes here, or a business in Archlotta County is not paying taxes here. What I had, what I had kind of thought was maybe raising the cap, and then even adding an additional half a percent or something like that for, for specifically in city businesses to further advantage in city.
So, let me share with Council kind of how the process of the vendor preference works. So later on tonight, there's a vehicle we're gonna ask you to award, and we assessed a Durango vendor $828 for vendor preference. So, uh, and we asked, that's just used to evaluate the bid. In other words, the city's not gonna pay $828 more than what he has to bid. We assessed him that as a way of evaluating the bid in the way we recommended it to the city council. So, um, it doesn't, the City of Cortez did not want to save that extra $828. I just wanted to make that kind of clear. We still would only like to put this order for what his actual bid was.
Yeah, it's an advantage, it's not, it's not a bonus, is what they're saying.
So, Robert, do you have like numbers then that you, you know, wanna throw out that we can evaluate?
Sure, um, yeah, I had, I mean, just kind of comparing ours, looking at Durango's. I, I was thinking raise the, raise the cap to $25,000 if you, then apply to larger bids, and then an additional, then maybe an additional half a percent for in, in city businesses. And it would still have to have that same, the same declaration of if it's grant-funded, federal or state-funded, that it wouldn't apply, because that affects how those funds come in. Tell, that's where Kelly and I actually wanted to make sure that was included.
So you're, you're talking about getting rid of all these categories and just making it, that's the previous? Yeah, okay, yeah, so just up to 25,000, Monzauma County.
So to clarify, Robert, the 2% up to 50,000 roughly, and 1% above, or do you wanna change those?
Uh, I, I would think just in being a flat 2% up to 50,000, or up to $25,000 value, and then an additional, an additional half a percent for in-city business. Because I would like to advantage in-city business more.
Okay, and not even have a 5%? That, that's the old, old, right. So there's another one that, from 2009? Oh, 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 about that. Oh, yes, okay, here we go, sorry.
So if Council would like, uh, future council meeting, I'll write over there, I'll present another reservation. Um, so hopefully we can get the, the, quite a picture of them.
Thank you.
Worley, do you have any questions or comments?
I believe that the policy needs to be updated, like you guys were saying, because of the 10 years, whatever, but the, the 2%. Robert, what you were saying was 2% from 0 to 250,000, is that what you said?
Uh, I was, I was saying 2% and just cap the, um, cap the actual preference amount at, at 25,000. So we wouldn't even need to break down to like 2% and then 1%. It would just be a 2% preference with a 2.5% preference for in-city businesses. And then the total preference gap would be $25,000.
Okay, thank you, senor. I don't have any questions that, I just hope it gets updated, I mean, be a day so we can keep it going, because trying to keep the local vendors, give them a better chance.
Thank you, Worley, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Rick. Next item on the agenda is, Judge, number B, update on the paths to Mesa Verde Trail. James Dietrich, Natural Resources Planning and Public Lands Coordinator. Good evening, James.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Chris is putting out an extra copy of that in the locker. Okay, uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Kind of slide shows along with the update thing provided here this evening. Let you all have a good night, so I'll just, we'll be brief here. First thing I'm looking to do, I mean, you know, I First thing I wanted to do, I mean, you know, I don't know that all of who were here, um, you know, the time we start this project. This project has been going on quite some time at this point. Uh, so I want to kind of just kind of give the brief overview on how things, how genesis this would have happened. Um, so starting in about two thousand and three, uh, the city of Cortez approached Monazuma County, uh, interested in creating a trail that would go from the city of Cortez to Mesa Verde Interests. At the time, the city, the, uh, Monazuma County Commissioner was not really interested in this pathway. Uh, they really were having a hard time, uh, understanding the value, I think, in the community. Uh, you know, at the time, uh, you know, I think, uh, I can't remember the exact quote, uh, you know, last time I went to the city, you know, like we're glad mountain bikers in our community. So, uh, but I, I think your perspective has changed over that time. Um, so yeah, in two thousand and three, again, the county wasn't interested. Part of the reason they weren't interested is the county has those sales tax. So I think it was really hard for the commissioners to connect the dots on what the value was to do with all, you know. Uh, and again, I think, uh, you know, over time, perspective has changed. So back in twenty twelve, uh, the city of Cortez, um, had apparently been in conversation with the town of Mangus. So then these came to the county again and approached us on the possibility of a trail going, um, this kind of all the way from Cortez to Mangus, taking the Mesa Verde and the middle. Uh, and at this point, I think the commissioners were starting to, to have a little bit larger, um, picture of what recreation really means to the county. And so there was a, a better reception at this point. Uh, so the decision was made that, uh, we could, uh, start doing evaluation, uh, to determine whether or not that trail was feasible. We initially started off with a transportation planner that was, uh, kind of on loan to us in the Yount. Uh, the initial plan, then he came up with, uh, indicated that we had a viable project on Mangus. And so the next step of that was to start looking for some actual planning money. So in, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, uh, the county was successful in landing a four hundred thousand dollar transportation alternative program grant, which included a hundred thousand dollars in match from the local community, so the overall budget was five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so the split on that, because we were in partnership, uh, in, in the county, the town of Mangus and city of Cortez. So the split on that was forty percent county, forty percent Cortez, and twenty percent out of Mangus. Again, Mangus looked a break because they were a smaller entity and really just couldn't, couldn't afford what the rest of us could, uh, get. So, uh, at, at this point, uh, we've gone through the transportation alternatives, uh, planning grant. Uh, part of that grant was preparing a planning and environmental languages study. And so what that does is really kind of truncates a lot of the need of the plants that we had to go through. Uh, because we took federal dollars, that made this a federal project. And by doing so, we, we have to create a trail that not only, uh, takes into account all the, uh, environmental concerns, uh, input and give the, uh, process that we have to go through to evaluate that. Uh, but also, uh, did make this trail such that it had to be an accessible trail. So I know there's had to be a surface that could be accessed, you know, by, by people, uh, uh, you know, express mobility and things of that nature. In other words, probably going to be, uh, be a hard surface trail or something like that, not really likely. Um, so as we went through the planning environmental languages study, uh, we, you know, part of that process was really to kind of go through and, uh, visit the landowners, uh, along the potential route. I think if you look at page two, you see what the, uh, overall study form looks like. That kind of purple blocks there, did you see? That is kind of the area that we thought the trail probably would go. And so we started, uh, you know, I, I chatted a little bit, uh, we, uh, held some public meetings, sort of like, uh, gauge for what type of trail they were really interested in. Uh, what, what came back is that they, they felt like an open noble trail that was off of the highway route, most preferred, uh, trail. We also asked the community if we're not successful in, in getting landowner cooperation, which we didn't come to know that we trailed this along the highway right. So, uh, the answer that came back from our community was clearly that's not our preferred option, but yes, we are. So we look at page three. Uh, you'll just see a lot of blue lines on there, these are spread lines on there too, there are persons, fields, fields more than a trail bar. All the blue lines are on that map, or potential trail are off that we evaluate. And obviously, most of them is cross-pilot land, and so, uh, there's a color code that goes along with this. If you look at the green, it'll be kind of lighter colored green, some of the darker colored green represents public lands. But the lighter colored green represents landowners that said, well, we're, we think this is a good idea, we'll, we'll talk to you, we'll work with you. And so we're, we're doing pretty good on the Cortez side, uh, we, you know, as you can see, there's a green there. Uh, the yellow indicates landowners that were pretty looted for with the idea. They didn't say absolutely no, but they said, well, uh, we'll work with you, we need to talk about some things. Uh, the red, uh, is our, uh, landowners that said absolutely no way, they, they, they didn't work with us at all. So as you can see, we're on the Mangus side, uh, we have a whole lot more landowners that said, no, absolutely not. And they were large landowners. Uh, so after evaluating all the potential routes, um, on, on the Mangus side, uh, we came to the conclusion that there was no viable routes left that were off the highway right. And so as a result, uh, the final trail alignment, uh, came in on the south side of the highway from, from the town of Mangus, uh, to the Mesa Verde Interests. Uh, and so that's where we're putting our energy on that right now. On the Cortez side, however, um, there was still some possibility. Um, and so we continued to work with landowners, uh. And so we've got the trail broke up into four sections essentially. Uh, section A goes from Cortez to the fairgrounds, section B goes from the fairgrounds to Mesa Verde Interests. Section C, um, you know, that the east side, um, goes from, uh, Mesa Verde Interests to Mud Creek. And then, uh, D section goes from Mud Creek to the town of Mangus. And as I already explained, uh, section C and D, um, is pretty well set stone and other options, other options on that. Uh, in the meantime, as we work with the landowners on, uh, section B, um, a couple of landowners, uh, that put their land in consideration, easily that trade apart, and they said, uh, no, not for. So section B then all of a sudden becomes, uh, restricted, just to the highway right. So section A from, uh, Cortez to the fairgrounds is the last green section, which has possibility of keeping that trail off of the highway and, uh, out, out there into, uh, private land. So, you go to the next page, um, it's kind of a little bit more of a, just kind of blows up the, uh, Cortez side. Uh, you can see some of the landowners that, uh, that had, you know, were agreeing with the landowners in front of him. Um, it's a little bit hard for me to describe to you on this one. There's one parcel that's just south of this, this trail. I think most of you all know where this is at. That particular parcel, a hundred and sixty acres, was a key parcel for getting through that trail. At the time, that parcel was known by called landowners, um, none of which seemed to be able to agree with each other on either. However, since that time, uh, one landowner has been paying all the taxes on that. And since that, that parcel went through the tax sale, that landowner, that was the sole, uh, controlling owner of that, that parcel. That landowner has indicated that they will continue to work with us and negotiate on potential right. So we're still alive in section A in terms of, uh, possibly getting that trail out of the highway right. C dot would really prefer to have that happen because with this section A, that's where, uh, most of the, the highway access points exist. And C dot would really prefer to keep us, uh, away from those highway access points because that's where most of the accidents can happen. So anyway, we tried really hard to continue to work with landowners at that point. Uh, however, this, this project has gone on for so long that, uh, landowners have started to change hands to their behalf. So we're back at the point where we're going to have to go back, contact each one of these landowners and reaffirm that they're still wanting to work with us. Uh, I also know that because this is a federal project, um, we can't just go, arm on doors and say, hey, we work with this. Um, it requires an improved C dot, uh, negotiating, uh, to work with the landowners, uh, to just make sure that they, they're getting, uh, you know, offered this, this equitable and fair to them. Uh, so anyway, that is, that's part of the, you know, regulations of your vendor, of the federal project. Well, so then the last, uh, red slide I've got here, uh, this slide's a little bit more detailed. And what I wanted to point out of this is we evaluated multiple routes. Uh, and so routes that are shown in dash line, there were red, red dash line. Those are routes that we evaluated and can be eliminated because they had a fatal flaw. So the blue dash line is our preferred route at this time from Cortez. And I, and I might mention too, that the, the terminal point would be the Cortez High School. Um, and then, uh, and that blue line continues all the way to the Monazuma County Fairgrounds. So again, I think we've got some potential still up in there, it's not a landmark. Uh, but I do think that the, uh, the landowners, uh, seem to be willing to work with us in this particular area, uh, so we're going to give that a minute of room. Uh, I'm going to kind of go through some of the funding and, and, uh, and where we're at with all of that. Uh, you know, as I explained, the initial project budget for this, uh, with the initial grant that we got, which was a pretty small group's program grant, uh, the project budget was five hundred thousand dollars. The grant amount was four hundred thousand, and the local share was twenty percent, that was a hundred, hundred thousand dollar match. But I explained it was split forty, forty, and one. So, uh, on the Mangus side, um, we, uh, we felt like, uh, you know, we got to the point where we finished the planning environment, we just, uh, we still had enough dollars left to do about thirty percent, uh, design. And so because that side of the hill was already set in stone, we had no further options, we didn't want to hold them back. Uh, and so we decided that, uh, we would move forward with the thirty percent design, uh, for Mangus to, to the, uh, Mesa Verde Interests. Okay, so we accomplished the, uh, thirty percent design, we've accomplished the, uh, PPL study. And as of this time, the transportation alternatives grant has been closed out, to give that, that portion over. So, uh, at this point, uh, the, uh, the town of Mangus has paid their, their portion of, of, uh, of the initial, uh, bill. Uh, city of Cortez has, has made twenty thousand dollars. Um, the initial agreement was, uh, to pay forty thousand to begin, that would be the, um, portion of the county, uh, owed also. So we're, we're hanging out at this point at twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so to kind of catch you up on the real rap with all the rest of the grants, uh, we continue to seek grants for, for the Mangus side. It's successful in securing, uh, a grant from Colorado Beautiful as, as, uh, Foco. Um, and that grant came in, I mean, on a hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. The total project budget for that was two hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And that would be intended to, to drill that design on that side of the hill, thirty percent to a hundred percent. So we're still left looking for construction funding, right? So, uh, we, uh, applied for another grant from the Federal Land Access Program, the flat grant. We were successful in landing the flat grant, uh, and they, they have guaranteed us, uh, five million, seven hundred thousand dollars for during the construction and remaining design on the Mangus side. Mangus side's looking pretty good at this point. Uh, the county share in that, uh, is seventeen point two percent of local match. That comes out to be nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, the town of Mangus, um, has agreed, uh, to pay thirty percent. Um, so, uh, and that's one of the things I really wanted to talk to the councilors about because, uh, you know, this initial split, obviously, we do the math on it, it doesn't really work very well. Uh, because obviously, city of Cortez doesn't want to pay in on the Mangus side, and obviously, the Mangus side doesn't want to pay in for, for the Cortez side. So I think, you know, as we, we proceed through this project, um, you know, I, uh, from the county's perspective, uh, I, I feel like we're looking at a fifty-fifty split on this. Um, so as we move forward on, on the Cortez side, um, uh, last year, we were successful in landing the multi-modal options fund, uh, which is a special grant with, uh, called a state legislature. Uh, that grant is in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. The match amount on that would be, uh, ten percent, which comes out to be fifty-one thousand dollars. So in my mind at least, at this point, because this is all on the, on the Cortez side, I feel like the Cortez city and, and, uh, and county, uh, should be looking at about fifty-fifty split on that, which would come out to be, uh, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars apiece. So that grant has been awarded and we're currently working on that segment. So what, uh, what portion are we working? So right now, because landowners between, uh, the fairgrounds and the, and the interest Mesa Verde have decided not to cooperate with us, that put us in a position of needing that, that trail along the highway right. So from, from the fairgrounds to the, uh, Mesa Verde Interests, um, the trail is designed on the north side of the highway because it will pick up, uh, the, uh, rest area, it will pick up the San Juan Basin Botec, it will also connect to Fields World. So part of this, this portion of the design, uh, will also include working on an underpass, which will be located near the fairgrounds entrance. And the purpose is to, to, uh, connect the fairgrounds, everything on the south side of the highway. Uh, two fields world and those amenities on the north side of the highway are supposed to have reach. So that's a part of that, uh, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, which is the overall project budget for segment. And segment B is, is fairgrounds and Mesa Verde Interests. We're still left with time to, to find dollars to help us work with the design, to finalize the design for, for segment A, which is from the, the Cortez High School to the fairgrounds. And so that is the piece that, uh, we're still doing fundraising on at this point for design. Uh, regarding the construction, um, on the Cortez side, we still have to pursue dollars for all construction on, on the Cortez side. And we're hoping that we can get this done in time, we're ourselves in time for another round of applications for the, uh, federal land to access program grants that are coming out. They got five or six on that. Uh, I might mention too, that the, uh, construction on the Mangus side is not scheduled until twenty twenty-six. That's one of those funds we can't reveal. So, uh, anyway, this is a long-term project, um, and, uh, we've been efforting, it seems like, for forever, uh, right now. Um, and there's still a long ways to go on this. Uh, but anyway, that, that's kind of where we're at at this point. And, um, you know, I feel, uh, you know, I feel pretty optimistic that we can still get something um, off of the highway between Cortez and Fairgrounds, which is what the public is asking for. And, uh, you know, it looks like, you know, there, there will be some, some game in that, and so we'll pursue this as far as we can. Um, so right now, we're working with, uh, our consultant to finalize the plans, uh, you know, for, for the, uh, um, segment B for, uh, for the fairgrounds to Mesa Verde Interests. We've got some wrinkles in that plan, uh, we, uh, discovered that the, uh, the highway department has never finalized their right-of-way for, for the highway. So, uh, you know, essentially, we've got, it's, it's, uh, you know, kind of landowners that they don't land across the highway. But since the, uh, since the right-of-way has, has never been, uh, formalized, uh, we're going through a process of making sure that, uh, that we can actually do the construction in that highway right-of-way and not have to go out and go every day for the right. I feel pretty optimistic that C dot is going to step up and play and, uh, even help us out with that. Um, it's not known at this point, but we are working with them to develop regular plans and make sure that we got that. Um, so I guess that kind of gives us a pretty good overview on the program, I think, kind of. It's been kind of quite.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify, James. So one, so technically, the, the city still owes the county twenty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, and then you mentioned again to split the design costs at, at another twenty-five thousand, five hundred. How soon would you need that? Would you want that, that money?
Well, you know, I don't think we're in real time right on that, you know.
Okay.
My suggestion on this is that you work together with the county to develop an MOU that really defines what each party is going to pay in. And again, this is, you know, that, that twenty-five thousand is only for the Segma B, which is for the Fairgrounds to Mesa Verde interest. Still are going to have to deal with Segma A. But I think that we ought to probably get that MOU in place so we all know what we're dealing with. And, you know, hindsight, you know, looking back on this, I, I kind of remember why, why we never went through that before, trying to find that every first application. Although I think, you know, in some respects, most of us were, were not able to spare any chance to ever really get around. And, and lending any more, any more dollars for this, we really kind of very hard to go on that. So however, you know, I, I think that was a mistake, trying to really find that. Although at the time, you know, we were looking to get the full section of the trail. And just the way that whole thing was split up, you know, we really, we did, did put a lot of thought into how we get to construction, whether you want Nankas, we're going to want to pay for the Cortez side and Mesa Verde. You know, as this project kind of evolved, I think it really became pretty clear that each side was wanting to pay for their portion of the trail. And that makes sense, you know, I mean, we should have already defined that probably at all time.
This sounds like a, a huge undertaking, but I think, you know, this is going to be a, a huge economic boom for our community. You know, especially after this weekend of the twelve hours race and just how, you know, that's a huge attraction here.
Well, certainly, you know, I think we all have realized, you know, how, how big of an impact bicycling as far as recreation activity, how big the impact that would have. You know, obviously, none of these trails are really going to give you a dollar-for-dollar return on your investment. I think what we really got to focus on is the fact that we're really going to build a portfolio of recreational opportunities for Monasito County. And we're a direct competition with places like Durango and Moet. So even to stay competitive, we are going to have to develop some of these kind of amenities. But again, it's not going to be a dollar-for-dollar return. We really need to be focusing on the bigger picture, which is kind of the whole portfolio of everything that happens in Monasito County. And bicycling is a big slice of that. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, every, every slice of the pie, you get as much as you can possibly get. And obviously putting, putting some effort into accommodating bicycle routes, something that appears to have a little strong potential for return on investment. The other thing that we mentioned is that, you know, trails, you know, it's not just the edifying side of this. This is really also about the, the, the place that people want. We already got people moving here because of Fields World. People are buying land all the way around that mountain park because it's, it's providing a recreational opportunity. So again, when we look at this as a part of a portfolio, I think the picture becomes more and more clear. And I think we can understand how important these kind of amenities are to our community from the whole level perspective.
Can I clarify something real quick? Okay, so you were just saying about the MOU. We still don't have one, do we?
That's correct.
Okay, so can I just clarify? We don't owe anything right now.
Well, you agreed to pay your forty percent. How can you pay twenty thousand dollars and thirty thousand dollars to it? From my perspective, it's still a twenty percent.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know that. Like, sorry, I may have missed it. You were talking quite, you had a lot of stuff to offer us.
Yeah, that's.
I wanted to set these. Okay.
Thank you. There's a lot to get your head around, but it's, it's very helpful.
Kelly, is that something you can work on then and see where if we have those funds and what the agreement was and if we can pay them?
Yeah, I couldn't, wish I could see if there was, you know, an original agreement that specified those dollar amounts that we can pay. And I'd track that. And then also to look at where, you know, maybe they originally thought those funds were going to come out and see if those are still available today.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Okay, well, I think, again, this was a lot to add yet. This is, this is a complicated project and it's still a lot of parts, a lot of partners. You would mention that Mesa Verde and we don't have a strong partner source. Also, C DOT, C DOT has been outstanding in marketing for us, really built up, has done a lot, especially with all of this at that first. And they will continue to be there for us. Is there any more questions or is that's?
Yeah, I got a few, James. Wasn't there a, a limit when the city agreed for that twenty percent? Wasn't there a limit instead of a, on, on blank checkbook? But I think there was a limit that you could only spend up to so much for that percentage, if I recall.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because if, because the only reason I'm saying that is because if it keeps going and going and going, and pretty soon we'll be throwing money. I mean, that we don't even have budgets for it, so. But I thought there was a limit.
Uh, I'm sorry, I really can't hear you. I will.
James, do we have given, we can raise the funds and make this thing happen? Do we have a project date or a completion date or any, anything, any idea of when this might happen, given the funds?
Okay, yeah, so we have no completion date on this. Because, because we're going for grants, we're relying sheer on all this, you know, it's really dependent on how dollars are allocated. And primarily, we've been focusing on going through the federal dollars. Because honestly, the dollar amount for doing this kind of construction is so large that, for example, Yoko dollars are not even coming close to being able to pay for all of that. So I'll give you an example on that. On the, on the Nankas side, we're looking at five point seven million in, in, for the, for the care. And that short, the, the side doesn't really underpants for the highway. So I'm anticipating that you probably would have, you would have probably more than ten years or so on, on the Cortez side. So, so we're really going to be counting on tapping into the federal dollars for.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, James.
Thank you, thank you.
Really forward looking and.
And again, with this, we're working on the Cortez side at this point, we'll start getting more regular updates. Kind of press all, all kind on the same page and we're all, we're kind of like, kind of playing as a, as a team on this side. Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks again very much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, discussion on combining the Street Commission with the Parks and Recreation Board to create the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. Director of Parks and Recreation, Dean Ponquist. Good evening, Dean.
Good evening, City Council. And I just wanted to also say that we have Roman Jefferson here. He's a local certified arborist who's been on my Parks and Rec by before now for several years. He'll be a part of this conversation tonight, so he'll be here now when we can have some discussion. I think, I think with this discussion, I would like to talk about two different items. One is the Parks and Rec by two board and the tree commission. And number two is the resources we currently have to accomplish this task of keeping helpful for tree maintenance. So, so number one, I have it for you.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. Yeah.
So let, let me know. Is it, you're okay with?
Just can you just speak closer to your mic a little bit? Your camera.
Is that, is that okay?
That's much better.
Okay, okay. Gee, man, maybe not paying for the taller people. In any way, uh, so, again, we'll talk about two things. One about the Parks and Rec by two board, there were two about the resources being unavailable. You need to take care of tree maintenance. So the first is the Parks and Rec by two board. And you can, you have it for you, I think you're accurate, that in two thousand and five, there wasn't a tree commission up to that point. And then it was dissolved and declined with the Parks and Rec by two board. And from history, I'm, I wasn't hearing that, or from the history I gathered, that the tree commission was, was somewhat of an effective tool to try to take care of the tree maintenance in Cortez. But simply, I think there, what, what they were wanting to see happen and what the city could provide at that time were two different things. I think according to what the resolution says, they accomplished a lot of their goals. And it was just a matter that I don't think the community could keep up the resource of what they were wanting to get accomplished at that time. So it was combined mainly for to keep the advisory board or the, that capacity going for like education of trees, which we've done every year with Arbor Day Celebration and some basic tree conversations. But it wasn't, it really hasn't been a group to say, we're here to accomplish a lot with the tree maintenance. It's more used as an educational tool. So that's since, since I've been here in two thousand and nine forward. And it's accomplished that. And we usually then get designation for Tree City USA, which we're in our twenty-ninth year as a Tree City USA. So I think that's a tremendous accomplishment for the community and for, you know, our former Parks and Rec, for Christopher Gatt, to get that established and going. So I applaud him on that. With that said, I think to go back to a tree commission, we really need to have the resources available to accomplish more preventative maintenance. I think we do a pretty good job on reactive maintenance when like the trash drop comes through and, you know, gets clipped with the trees. Then the, our tree resource comes in and gets that maintained before you. What I just gave it out was in twenty twenty, where all the trees that were either removed through in the community. This is a report from Don Corret, who oversees, about Bill, William Hill, who is our arborist, that's a part-time arborist because he's part-time working with trees and part-time working in the streets. So he's not a full medicated arborist in that position. He has, you know, other duties associated with that. And it's just scheduled in when it can be scheduled in, unless it's an emergency and it's active upon really soon and taken care of. So, so with that said, we do have, in two thousand and nine, we had a, we had a tree assessment done with like, and it was funded with the Colorado Forest Service to assess all of our trees in the community and the condition that they were in. And we have five or six zones that they identified for different tree care. And I would propose within that, we move forward with a preventative program. And I've talked to Phil Johnson, our Public Works Director, Mark Pauling, our Park Superintendent, and then also briefly with Roman Jefferson, to try to do a contractual preventative service to go out and assess our trees in, in different zones. And trying to get this accomplished on a proactive side to assess our trees and then have a team come in of the same contractual service to do preventive maintenance in the community. And we've budgeted, you know, anywhere from five to eight thousand dollars roughly for tree care. But it's, it's not enough. It's not enough. And the reactive measures we have isn't enough to take care of the preventative side of things. I think we need more like forty or fifty thousand dollars in resource to really do a more thorough job of preventive tree care maintenance. And I would propose that we look at that in the upcoming budget to see if we can do something like that. So when Roman talks here about the tree commission, that we have a resource that aligns with what the tree commission would want to get accomplished. So with that said, I'd like to turn over to Roman now. And then if we can have questions, field questions out there, please, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean. Dean, you're on.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Roman Jefferson. This Dean's been on the Parks and Rec and Forestry Advisory Board for a couple of years. And what I've seen, and I'm a certified arborist, I have my business in this town. I look at the trees everywhere I go and I see the trees in Cortez are in serious neglect. And as a part of the advisory board, I've been doing my best to bring this to the attention of the city. Dean is technically the city forester, but he's kind of working with his hands tied because they're trying to share William Hill, the quote-unquote city arborist, with Public Works. And really, the problem is, is there's not enough interdepartmental coordination. When you're trying to share personnel between departments, turns out it doesn't work very well. Not to mention budget for this stuff. So the city needs to do a farm. It needs to have a designated arborist who is either under one department or under its own department. You might need to have extra personnel to help that arborist. You need resources to throw at this. But really, we just need to start paying attention. And I think that's why I think the advisory board for, for the, the tree commission matter is essential to start paying attention, to get Phil Johnson and Dean Ponquist on the same page. Or it doesn't have to be them, it could be Mark Pauling. To, to get these departments on the same page, because it's not happening either Parks and Rec or Forestry Advisory Board. Because we don't have Public Works' input. So if we can establish the tree commission, we can get everybody on the same page. We can get a city council member on board to start caring what these people do. Because the urban forest in Cortez is actually quite nice. Monasito Avenue is the best example. It is such an attractive street because we have large old trees. Those old trees are in decline because of European upscale. And they're all the same age. So as they decline, they all climb together and it becomes a liability. So that's just a good example of something that we, we just start talking about. I think we have a tree commission, we'll have these conversations. We'll be talking to you guys. We're going to give you an earful. You're going to realize, oh, we do need to put some serious resources to this. And then we can get the ball rolling. So that's really why I, why I think we need a tree commission. Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, Roman, let's just.
Mike, the question. Your mic.
My mic. Oh. All right, can you hear me now? Does the arborist work with utility companies, for instance, where there's lines involved and trees, et cetera?
There's usually designated tree services that do line clearance. It's called ASCLN. They're a nationwide company that just focuses on that. So we wouldn't do that. And I don't think the city arborist would do that either. That would be the power lines.
Is there any guidance given when they're?
Any guidance given to?
To them when they're cutting the trees?
There's best practices. You mean for the power lines people?
Yes.
There's best practices, there's protocol. They do it by the book. They may look like they're attacking at trees, but they're doing the best they can. You gotta talk with Roman underneath the power line. There's only so much you can do. But maybe they cut it the right place. It's all according to the best practices.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, um, tree evaluation, or what did you, what did you call the?
The tree, tree assessment.
The tree assessment. So that was, we're looking at eleven, twelve years ago now. Do you think it's time, like, would you want to get a new one started or you think it's time for action? And, you know, what, what would be your plans?
I, I, I think we need to do a new tree assessment. We should do one about every ten years or so. So that's, you know, I think they did one back in early nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand. So, uh, and if, if we can get like a resource to take care of the preventative. So, uh, and if, if we can get like a resource to take care of the preventative, they can also work with the GIS to, just like the streets and other utilities to keep up that, uh, assessment on what's been accomplished. So we can get that all on digital and then it can be kept up with moving forward. And that's part of the thing too with the way we're set up right now. It's not a tool to keep, that we can keep up with. So that would be another goal of, of what we would wanna work towards. We, I would do a new tree assessment. And that was, I think that was around five or six thousand dollars contracting out with Colorado State U, uh, Forest Service. And they, I think they do a superb job from the last one.
And how many board members were there when this, there was two? Or did you wanna?
I'm gonna weigh in on that. I'm gonna depart from Dean on this. He's not listening to my advice. Uh, I think it's time for action. I think there are red flags out there, um, that we need to start hitting the streets. Not only that, but there are trees that are in decline that we can turn around if we do this now. So I think we can talk about it and think about it and do another assessment. But we really need to just start doing trees.
Can we do those simultaneously then?
Yeah, we have, that, that's a lot of these things, I think simultaneously.
Okay. I would say the trees in our community are definitely a huge asset. I mean, at work, I see everyone fight for the shady spots to park for, you know, six months of the year. Um, but okay, so how many board members, when this, these were two separate boards? How many members were required for each? Cause I think seven would be a lot if we, you know. So could we reduce the parks board?
Well, I think it was, you know, I think we were thinking the neighborhood is a free to pride like on a tree commission. And yeah, we can, we can reduce the Parks and Recreation Board through, you know, adoption, obviously, of a couple less members if we, we, uh, you know, if it would help to make sure we fill the one in each one of them.
And then would you have like a staff member from parks and a staff member from Public Works for now? Until like you, you know, say we approve the budget to have an arborist, a full-time or a contract?
I, I would definitely have my park superintendent on, on, on that even more public on within that group as of what's needed in Parks and. And it may involve time families to some degree too, which of course has a lot of trees out there as well. But yeah, I would think park and it's like, yeah, somebody designated for Public Works, well, Don Corbett. I mean, this is, whether conversations are always between Public Works.
I'm, I'm, like, uh, I've, I've already started recruiting already that citizens who are interested in being on this board. Um, and then I know that, uh, I spoke with Arlena about the technicalities of being a Tree City USA were required to have a tree commission. Technically, we're passing as having a part of the Parks and Rec Board. But, um, according to those rules, you're supposed to be in a tree commission and a city arborist. So I think this would bring us in compliance with that.
Thank you, Roman. You have any questions? Comments? Or anything?
I don't have any at this time. I'm just curious the amount of people that'd be involved. That's the only question there that I had. But Rachel kinda asked that one and everything went good there, I think. Thanks.
I just think to close, I think the biggest thing is the pathway to get there. You know, do you, do you contract this type of workout? Or do we have employees that need to research what's truly best for Cortez in this situation? You know, like what can give us hopefully the best bang for the buck? Get, get as much and be sustainable for the future as well. So that is just part of the thought.
Okay. As someone who had a rotten tree fall on their house a few years ago, I'm gonna advocate for this.
So, uh, what can we do to help you guys be successful, um, before we budget for a contractor? For the next this year?
So obviously maybe revisiting, having an established tree commission. Um, but what else could we possibly do in the meantime to support you guys?
I just think the biggest thing to advocate when we come forward and, uh, budget for, you know, for those, that's, uh, services to, to go through. You know, I don't think much to be, to leave anything. You know, we, we still are getting to the trees like right now. I know Phil Johnson got right on and, uh, wanted to go park rest and get trees. And they were being ready after to try to get those taken care of. And so I think on an emergency basis that we, we give the services. It's just on the more proactive side, you know? And I don't think mid-year, that's a, you know, it's hard to think for anybody to reallocate resources at this point. And so I just think it's really, let's get this thing in motion for the future. So we have what we need to start down the road of really doing the preventative care we need to.
Okay.
I'd like to see more interdepartmental cooperation. And I would like to see less trees cut down without consulting a certified arborist. And I would like to do that on a volunteer basis, but honestly, I'm too busy. Um, but I could work out a contract deal with the city, um, to assess the trees really doing to be taken down.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Dean and Roman. Appreciate that. Uh, your trees are a great, great resource in this city and, uh, require maintenance. And it's our responsibility also to take care of them. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Next item on the agenda is the update on Colorado Department of Transportation Multimodal Operations Fund Grant. Director of Public Works, Phil Johnson. Steven Hill.
Good evening, all mayor members, city council. Um, as you remember, in January of twenty twenty, we applied for or awarded a match grant of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, uh, to improve the DDA service street process and infrastructure. Um, this is, this grant also provides pedestrian walking access to Main Street for both south and north sides of Main. And while this grant would have been managed at the local level, it has to comply with CDOC specifications and requirements and stipulations. Is where, uh, this is why I'm here to talk about those requirements and stipulations and requirements. Um, we have to comply with CDOC's level of bidding and your study, like minors or minors. Uh, store buildings, verify right of ways on the infrastructure we've had in place for years and put in survey controls that drives across them. Um, you know, typically we can build an ADA grant, uh, in the city on our right of ways between thirty-five and four thousand dollars. On Main Street, it was thirteen thousand. Um, so, you know, and I've been working with, uh, CDOC's Bob. And I just wanna let you know, this doesn't end, not end with the tracks. My organization, CDOC, are a good way to see. And we have a very successful history with them. Uh, this is more driven by the, um, headquarters regulations of this system. Um, specifically like an ADA grant, when we do a bid, we say removal request. In kind, make it compliant with CDOC specs. We use a specification rule. And CDOC, they want the bid item to be moved. And they want you to put a bid in and then replace class six, which is the sub base. And then they want a bid item to be replaced. So as soon as you've placed something, a single activity into free to bid, you're gonna drive across to them. Um, you know, engineers estimates, uh, on our side of this program, which would, which included the Madison corridor, which alone, I should do individuals are issued during the process. As well as with the Montezuma corridor, we're expecting to spend around four hundred thousand dollars. Um, CDOC's initial reaction to that estimate was it's gonna be able to fly. And, um, so I find that very problematic. And particularly my concern to Regifier Director, that, um, you know, this is off grid. It's not a right of way, it's a city right of way. And, you know, at this, at this level of funding, a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars is prohibitive what their, their requirements are and what they are, you know, made us do to jump through levels of, you know, projects that could be anywhere from ten to a hundred and fifty million dollars. These, these things they have a thing that just fits all, but it doesn't fit us. And so, um, right now, I am of the opinion that we do not accept this grant at all, as requirements and costs to us, because the effort is not worth the reward of this one for this level. But, um, that's not gonna stop us from getting the, you know, the, the project that motivated this thing is the Madison project, Madison House. Getting that sidewalk improvements done so that those residents can have exercise around there and also get them to Main Street. So they can go up to grocery store or wherever else they gotta go. And it's not gonna stop us from doing the improvements on, on Montezuma, which we wanted to, you know, there was a need there. We wanted to accomplish, we just don't do that this year. If, if in fact so, well, if we take the grant, we're gonna have to take a volume away from all the street projects to, to do the project, being sorry. So, um, you know, what I guess what I'm gonna ask, saying to you is I'm, I'm hoping this up for discussion is that we do not accept this grant. And, uh, you know, I've had an operating team, that's council, we have a, a ten by title. And we move forward with our own, um, funding of our streets improvement program, street improvements program. And we can get the Madison, uh, section done for less than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I'm open to any more questions. I know this is, uh, you know, um, counterintuitive when you start thinking about getting grant funds. But when we have to spend how much more money to, uh, you know, achieve our goal, um, I, I don't think that it's, uh, you know, I don't think it's in our best interest. Like we can use that money to do more chit-si-toe work, um, and do more work for our residents that are not on those corridors, uh, currently.
Phil, when you, when you bring that to, to us for a later meeting, could you, um, could you give us a basically like run the numbers both ways? So we can look at it on one sheet and kind of compare it.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
So you're asking for a resolution to refuse a bid?
Um, well, I'm, I'm just seeing this off, so we can, and find out what the, the tendering of the council is. If they in fact do not, you know, they support this or not. We can workshop this again and that's, you can come back to the next workshop with that spreadsheet. So you can look at what we're gonna get when Robert hits the road and where it does it. And, uh, you know, we can, you know, not accept the grant.
And I didn't mean to sound, you know, I'm just saying, so that's what we need to prepare for the meeting or the action resolution, which is the grant to settle it down so that we were.
Right, because it was a resolution for the mayor, so I accept it. Yes.
That's just one question.
Any questions?
Nope. Yeah, I, I would like just to see a little bit more information as what Robert had said.
I would. Yeah. I'm glad to provide that. I just wanted to give this up from usually starting with, and I can have it generated. And I can get it to Linda and you can have it a couple of weeks before the next meeting. So, um, we can have a discussion.
Kelly, any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Kelly, do you have anything to say?
Yes, so, and the findings record for the city for this. I know it does seem counterintuitive that we can be, you can, we're at funding. But I have worked with, I have CDOC grants for other organizations. And not only does it make it cost a bit, but administratively, the grants are so hard to us. And so it takes so much time and effort. The tiny amount of money that you receive in the end, they actually wind up costing you more money than the grant. So I've learned that from experience, the hard way. Something else to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
The town of the worst experienced that when they did the sidewalks going down, um, what is it, Verroa? Um, they had negotiated for free donations of right of way. And CDOC made them go back and buy it according to a formula. So it increased dramatically the costs of the project. So, um, this is not a bad idea to avoid the, I think it was, it kind of was hidden costs. They didn't, they didn't really stand out until you got there. Maybe Mr. Dover remembers this, but it was, it was not a pleasant surprise to the town. And they learned how much extra they were, what they thought were free sidewalks. And the town had already sent, spent the like decent amount of staff time in just going to all of the neighbors and having people donate the space and then it was a whole other. They did deeds and everything. It was, it was very, it was a really neat community effort to get it done. And then CDOC said, no, you can't do that. You gotta pay them, I'm writing the R for it. And so, um, yeah.
So.
This is Chad Hill, your city engineer. You know, in addition, the engineering is done. So it's been paid for. And so when we, you know, go down this road, the engineering is gonna be significant just because of what they put you through. And like, for example, they want property surveys. We're doing a replace and we're in a right of way. They want us to do boundary surveys of every property along Montezuma, where this impacts, which is many properties. So you just start putting all that together. And they basically admit, it's like, sorry, but that's what we have to do. HQ requires it, is what we heard. And we've had conversations multiple times and there's just no flexibility on that side.
And I haven't talked to Regifier Director and offered up some alternatives, uh, where, you know, they look at the level of funding and whether or not it's on their, on their main line and the capabilities of the jurisdiction, uh, their engineering, their, you know, their support staff. We're a full-service city. And, you know, they qualify bidders, they qualify companies to do, to work. Why don't they qualify me to some values of local jurisdictions that they can handle this on? They know that we can do it with our specifications. And, you know, make a grant, you know, don't give us a gift for price tag. So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to work with CDOC on this because I do want, I think this process needs to be improved for this reason. Uh, but that's, that's a, you know, that'll be an argumentous trip, I'm sure. But I will give that a day or two guys and you can have a couple of those before we get back to Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hey, next item on the agenda, update on Imagination Library Grant. Karen Sheen, good evening, Karen.
Well, hi, there. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's hard to be on this side of the desk. I really appreciate you giving time for me, um, on your agenda this evening. Um, as Mike said, I am here to share some information with you about Imagination Library, which is a book giving program that provides free books to children from birth to five years of age if they live in a participating community. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I don't know how much any of you, all of you know about the Imagination Library program. It was founded in nineteen ninety-five by Nellie Parham, it was funded by her foundation. And she created a grant in honor of her father, who was actually illiterate. By two thousand, they, it began in Tennessee, but by the year two thousand, they wanted to expand it nationally. In two thousand and two, they included Native American communities. And they took it to the international stage, uh, in two thousand and five. Uh, in the year two thousand and three, they delivered their one million book. They had, they had a special ceremony at the Library Congress to acknowledge that. They provide books, um, in audio as well as in mail format. Um, in twenty sixteen, they had reached the point where they were delivering a million books a month to eligible, eligible children, not only in the United States, but also in Canada, Great Britain, Australia, and Ireland. So it's a very, very big program. The books that are selected are chosen by experts in the field of childhood literacy. Because there are five different age groups, they choose books that are age-appropriate. And I will, before I leave, I'll give you a list of the books that are on the list right now. Uh, those titles change as new titles come out. Although the first book that every child receives is that. Although the first book that every child receives is that childhood classic, which probably all, many of you, uh, remember reading a little into the good. And the month that the child turns five, which is the last year that they are eligible for the program, they receive Lookout Canoe Board New York. The foundation purchases the books, but then the participating community provider, um, is responsible for raising the cost of postage, and the postage per child per year is twenty-five dollars. The books are also addressed to the child. That's something that, that Barton is, is very insisted upon. She believes that it's really important that this child realizes that that book that comes through the mail is addressed specifically to them in this paper. And is their key. Um, every child, regardless of how many children in the family, or if within that eligibility age range, receives their own book, and there's never a charge to the, to the family. The program was introduced to the Cortez Rotary, um, by our former city manager Shane Hale in about twenty twelve, I think. And for a number of years, Cortez Rotary was a successful sponsor of the program. We were able to raise enough funds, um, to offer the children, to all, to offer the books, the program to all children throughout Monza County. Uh, in twenty seventeen, which was the high point, we were, um, delivering books to six hundred, six hundred and fifty children. And at that time, five hundred and forty-two given over the age gap. So it was a very, very successful program. However, due to lack of funding and the fact that Cortez Rotary group is very, very small, the program was discontinued in twenty nineteen. I want you to know that I have spoken personally with parents and teachers in our community, who have told me how important they believe that the program is. I suspect probably many, if not all, who know the Yarborough family, Geraldine's children, nephews and sisters have all been enrolled. And he was most complimentary of the role regardless when I spoke with him. I visited with a mother, uh, who shared with me how excited her daughter was to go to the mailbox to see if that was the day. Oh, what a ride. Several years ago, I did tutoring at Kemper, and, uh, in the class that I was tutoring, uh, I asked the kids how many of them had participated in the Imagination Library Program. Seven out of fifteen children raised their hands, and when I asked them, um, what they thought about the books, the responses that they got were very, but, but all, I think, very telling of, of the value of this program. Um, one of those girls said that I still have my books. My sister now reads them. Another, I like the books. My name was on the book. I still read the books. My favorite book was the Little Into the Good. Um, I read the books with my parents, and I wish that I was still getting the books. Yeah, that's a, that's a common complaint that, um, Nellie Barton says, and she hears from lots of kids, that they wish that they continue to get the books beyond that five-year cutoff age. Um, I have talked with teachers who have told me that they get very often tell when a child in their class has participated in that program, because it does make a difference in their, um, reading readiness and in, in their preparation for school. Studies confirm that the number of books in a home correctly predicts reading achievement. But ownership builds pride and self-esteem. When children are given books, they experience the thrill of finding something brand-new that shows a special for them. It makes children feel valued. Having books in the home has proven to positively benefit children in myriad ways. A two-decades-long study found that the mere presence of a home library increases children's academic success, vocabulary development, and attention span. Even as few as twenty books in a home has a significant impact on compelling a child to higher education. The more books, the greater the benefit. And research concern confirmed that books of a child's language development occurs before they ever actually go to school. Um, if language development does not occur at that point, very often that child will be in the gap from then on. They start from a position behind, and they're just never able to catch up. So books are instrumental in language development and are important, um, in raising young children. Many lower-income families, if they don't have the expendable income, provide books for their children. And I know those of you that grow with books, magazines, newspapers in your homes, probably find that pretty amazing. But when you stop and think that, according to the School Library Journal, the average price of a children's book in twenty eighteen ranged from almost seven dollars for what's called a trade paperback book, to almost nineteen dollars for a hardback book. You can see that a lot of lower-income families, if they don't have the resources to be providing books for their kids. But with the Imagination Library Program, a free book is delivered every month. There's no charge to the families, I said, and most of the children in a, in a family each receive their own book. There's been a lot of research that is done, even though we're still in the pandemic, um, that indicates that this event has disproportionately impacted children from lower-income families. They often begin school with many disadvantages, um, that such a program as Imagination Library might help to mitigate. We have the framework in place. Uh, our public health department, they've passed heavily promoted the program. And when books become undeliverable, we're not sent back to the Nellie Barton Foundation. They're simply farmed out, and many of them, particularly the health department, where staff there likes, um, uh, families with children with, with age-appropriate books. Libraries in our community have helped promote the children, have helped promote, promote the program, even, uh, providing applications to society. Our families, hospitals and doctors' offices participate, and the program is promoted to, to school. So I, I'm here this evening just to tell you about the future of the library. Well, I'm here to tell you that recently, we had an anonymous donor that has made a one-hundred-thousand-dollar donation for Imagination Library for our community. One of the biggest problems that we ran into when, when Rotary was overseeing the program was just ensuring that we were able to raise enough money to be able to fund it, not obviously the word children you sign up, or what you need to have. So what we are looking to do at this point is to take that one-hundred-thousand dollars and use it as to save money and to provide leverage to create an endowment that becomes self-sustainable. The program is, is administered through, um, the Arnold Foundation, and, um, according to, um, Chuck Ford, that in order for the, in order for an endowment to, um, be able to support itself, we would need two-hundred-thousand dollars in our account. And that would be enough to provide, um, six-hundred-and-fifty children with, who's with the books, without dipping into the principal. I talked with, um, Josh Dellinger. Empire Electric has agreed to give us three thousand dollars. In fact, he was going to check to see if there might be some additional funds, because they, he told me when I spoke with him today, that they'd actually set aside in their, in their budget of three thousand dollar per year donation to the program. So I have my big responsibility, which actually one of the thousands will be able to donate this year. We are going to visit the county commissioners next week, in the hopes that perhaps some, um, grant funding that they, um, are getting and that they may be willing to, um, take for one year, a significant amount of that money to help, um, create an endowment. So the reason I'm here tonight, Council, is to ask the city to make an investment in children in our community. Because that's the way I look at this. This investment becomes a long-term investment, not only in the children who benefit from this program, but it also becomes a long-term investment in our community as a whole. Because the truth is, children are our future of this community. And having kiddos that have books in their homes, that get a good start, that develop a, a strong vocabulary before they enter school, they have a tendency to be a lot more successful, they are less likely to drop out. And that's not only good for that child, but it's good for Cortez, Delores, Magnus, and Monza County. So, I, obviously, since I'm not my council, I don't know what you, what it looks like. Um, I, I do understand that you are going to be getting some additional funding as a result of the pandemic. And I would encourage you to, um, look not only deep into your own cars, but also look at it from a, um, from a community perspective. If are there funds in the city budgets, it could possibly be expended to help us create an endowment that's sustainable. So that we can continue year after year after year to make this program available for our kids. So, are there any questions?
Uh, I have a question for Chris. Uh, in the ARCA guidance, is there anything related to, um, supporting like educational stuff? Because I know there's been a substantial, um, education loss as a result of the pandemic. Or is there any future potential for funding? So I know that this is coming kind of in waves, and for different purposes.
There are dollars set aside, uh, for educational purposes, the A R P A money. I would have to look into it much more to see whether we're targeting educational institutions or whether we need to, uh, kind of push towards education. And, uh, we're, we just received some information, uh, from the US Treasury outlining what the A R P A dollars can be used for in a little broader currency. But it's a hundred and fifty-one pages, and I have some to recall yet. So I, I guess I'm saying that, yes, there may be a possibility, but I couldn't square that in my mind.
Hi.
Thank you, Karen. We all know how important reading is, uh, and, uh, we'll do some digging to see, it looks like after we look into our budget, we appreciate your concern, Karen. Under the library, the badge report, and your experience in libraries, and, uh, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Okay. That covers the agenda items. Uh, we have a general council discussion in time right now. You have the ideas, comments, questions?
Uh, this is Councilwoman Medina. I'd like to bring up, um, the idea of a proclamation and proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month. Um, I'd like to do that proclamation either in tonight's meeting or in our second May meeting, and maybe have a more formal proclamation.
What is the name of it, Rachel?
Uh, designating June as Pride Month, P R I D E.
If you have a proclamation and someone gave you, we can write?
No, so then can we put that up for the next meeting, the end of May, and have one before, before then, created or brought to us?
Sure, if I have some way to talk to someone, I'm happy with what, what I'm just saying.
I can send you, um, an example.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other comments? David, hurry, go ahead.
Uh, I'm going to, uh, where the mic? I wanted to discuss the possibility of going back to our, starting our work session. And, which we originally did at six-thirty instead of five-thirty. Would, would anybody be interested in doing that, or is that?
I feel like it's my understanding that if we have a lot of material that we need to cover, that we start at five-thirty. Is that kind of how it's been arranged in the past?
That is correct. If, if there's not much on the agenda, we start the meeting later. If there's a lot of things that.
Only take five minutes?
Yes, we can start earlier, but if we're needing twenty minutes to talk about a child and provide them, then we start through here.
So in other words, it's our, our obligation to be here because we have a lot of topics that we need to cover. So I, you know, I, I, I ran for this position, and I will show up and continue to show up when I need to. Um, and if it means being here at five-thirty, I'm happy to be here at five-thirty.
I guess what I would say essentially is that if you said, okay, we are only going to start even six-thirty, you probably like seven-thirty, you're only going to have three topics you need to talk about. Because of how much information we can provide to you in background, that we can provide to you before those items might come up to your council, uh, for a vote, so justify this, uh, providing the city and other entities, providing you more background information before you're having to make a decision, instead of making your council meetings go until two, three in the morning. Yeah, and I, I, I know that, I, I know that we do staff particularly, we have a busy schedule, and staff does sometimes some of our time even getting onto our agenda, even with the current schedule, so I, I, I definitely.
I would ask, uh, David, is, is it an issue with like food and dinner? Is that something that would help with these long meetings, is if we had food? Because, um, because I'm afraid if we shorten our workshop meetings, then we're going to need a third workshop a month to, to kind of keep up with everything.
I, my response to that.
With the mic. Talking to your microphone.
My response to that would be, um, frequently our meetings, our general meetings go on beyond time. Not so much now as earlier, but five or six hours straight, with hardly any break. I, I feel like that compromises our thought and decision-making. I know it certainly does mine. And, uh, you know, I'm willing to go along with whatever the council, uh, decides, but, uh, I just, if we're going to do that, I think we need a significant break between, uh, workshop and council meeting.
Has, has, has workshops ever happened on a different day? Say, we have our workshops Monday, and then our meeting's Tuesday, to kind of spread it out?
Well, what I can essentially tell you is since, uh, I've been in there since nineteen seventy-eight, and that had not been the case, uh, council to all of the workshops the same time as council, because it's going, I'd rather come once a week than twice a week or come every week. Uh, you know, so I, I guess it really comes down to what council prefers. You would like to meet one night every week all along. That certainly could be done to reduce the amount of time. But and that means you're out all night in your current building. Um, and if it's not meeting the same amount of nights, it's just not over one long stretch.
Well, as, um, someone with a full-time job and like most council members have, you know, we can't come in earlier than five, you know, and we've got a lot going on, um. So I just, I don't think anything like during the day could happen. Could we, um, I don't know if this would be useful, but could we like poll, um, like all of the staff that are required to be, um, at council meetings to see, like, and also council members and whatnot, to see if they would prefer a different structure, and we could fill them there. Like whether or not they would prefer workshops on a different day, um, as the regular meeting, or the, I'm just throwing this out, this is just spaghetti on the wall, so. Or, I'm just throwing this out, this is just spaghetti on the wall, so.
Yeah, I, I, I really don't think, uh, staff cares which day it is. Other than I'm truly would not see it on Friday receptions or Sundays.
Well, like, uh, I mean, in terms of.
As I do.
Yeah.
But I think, um, how do you make the Thursday? I don't think it really makes any difference, yeah. But we can certainly poll them, uh, this day of days, and have the other thoughts.
Or I mean, sorry, I didn't say it correctly, but to poll them to see if they don't care, if they care or not about having the workshop and the agenda back-to-back, um, in terms of their schedule and their times. Um, because it's been, it's been going on since nineteen seventy-eight, as I just said.
One and four.
But, um, I guess we don't know unless we ask them if that's the most effective way to begin this.
We can certainly do that.
So, so, Marlene, my question to you is, um, can you start like a workshop line? You have neither, you're going to go four to two hours, or are you going to stick with the two-hour timeframe for your workshops now? If you're going to go start giving three, four hours of workshops every, uh, Monday, and still have a council meeting seven-thirty, or whatever, Tuesday, I mean, that's supposed to matter. You know, your workshop's just going to be two hours still, what you're doing now. I guess those are what will make a difference. I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Are you guys going to start like a four-hour workshop Monday, or a four-hour activity on Tuesday?
That's a lot.
I'm not really sure.
Yeah, because what I say is probably, uh, they always had Tuesdays for, you know, for council, some other people had some other meetings in the other rest of the week. But if, uh, I, on the workshop, even if it started at six, I think the stuff would be covered on the same night as the council meeting. On the, the workshop, there's some stuff that everyone's, I mean, it can be discussed. But I would say if, uh, if they change it to six and split the difference from six-thirty to five-thirty, and keep it the same night as the council meeting.
Oh, I, uh, absolutely. I, I do think if we were, if we wanted to shorten up the, the meeting, I think it would actually even be better. If we wanted to do that, which I don't think, I, I don't think we have the space to do that. But if we were, I think we should stick with five-thirty and then just end it and have an increased break in between. I think that would, I think that would help more with what, what David's talking about, uh, or council member, sorry, is talking about on that, on that front, but, um, but yeah, I, and to go back to like moving to another day, I, I know a lot of us, we have committee meetings with other board meetings. Having it all one, one day, twice, twice a month, I think is probably the easiest structure right now.
Yeah, what I was just trying to say is we can certainly take the workshop and instead of planning those, let's say, go all the way up till right before you have your meeting at seven-thirty. We can say, okay, we're done at seven, and give you a thirty-minute break. You know, if you want to do something like that, that's, you know, certainly within our planning priorities.
I could live with that.
Well, and I'd say there's probably steps we can do to make our agenda meeting more efficient too. Because, you know, and try to get those from running into, you know, ten, eleven at nine. Um, I guess I've always had a question about like the consent agenda. Does, do we need to read everything that's in the consent agenda before we vote on it? You, we do, okay. I was hoping I'd be a time saver, but.
Right, they just, he just needs to read the line that's included, so that it's on the record for the public to know what you, because some people do not see or do that.
Okay.
Just the line doesn't have, you know, it's not. Try not to put all the stuff in, just the line that you need to do that for the record.
Okay, good to know.
You folks have been presented with the unique opportunity on the seventeenth. You've got a new manager coming in, and, um, perhaps it would be good, and I realize what I'm sitting here. It's a difficult workshop to talk to them about how you want to have your meetings, how you want to set items on the agenda, who needs to do that, how do you do it? Um, I notice some, um, questions sometimes about how do I get someone on the agenda, who do I talk to? It might be a good opportunity to, to talk to him and standardize some procedures so we should know that, um, hey, I, I go to the city manager and he gets my stuff on the agenda by talking with the clerk, or I go to the mayor. Um, because sometimes we're competing very important things with not so important things for time and space. And so there needs to be somebody, um, to, to help do that guidance and make those decisions. Um, and it seems to logically be the city manager, but it doesn't have to be that. So, and, you know, that's a thought. Um, get something set up with your new manager whenever that person starts. There's probably some other things you want to talk to him about, about how you want to do business. I think it's an opportunity to get that set up.
Okay, there's also good ideas, or, uh, myself, I prefer to have them second, fourth, Tuesday, uh, starting at five-thirty if we, if it's required because of time, six or six-thirty if it's smaller workshop. Uh, but, uh, we, we can discuss this with the new city manager when you arrive. I think it's something we need to talk about.
Yes, I think, uh, that's my goal for tonight, is to just throw it out, have a discussion about it, uh, don't have to make a decision tonight.
All right, thank you. Okay, anything else? We have about two minutes before the regular meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Wet my pants.